I don't get bothered with no one's phone number. I was looking for it.
How many of y'all look for those, all those times?
Yeah.
The state contract number.
I don't want to head up there. Go and lock down the killers. We'll have to wait. We'll have to get a family.
(inaudible)
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 Call a meeting order. Let's reflect all council members present, with the exception of Ms. Malkins. We'll move into our department reports, starting with code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some of the highlights from the report here this evening. Code department received a total of 1,599 calls. We did 163 utility inspections, 48 code inspections, 33 permits, and collected $81,682 in permit fees. We addressed five citizens with complaints. And we've been receiving business license renewals, affidavits, and identification. And updating changes to the system. We've been creating an information package to assist contractors when permitting dust pickup and streamlining the building permit process. City Marshal wrote 18 repair cleanup orders. And we have two requests for us to get appropriateness with the State Preservation Commission, both of which were approved in October. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Patrick? Thank you. Electric Telecom.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, we had a fairly low total kilowatt hour usage, a little over 11 million, with a cost of $825,000. Telecommunications, we did have a top user a little higher than usual, 440 gigs, and a total of 74 above 200 gigs. Still nothing to really worry about. We're keeping an eyeball on it. Our peak usage was about 72% of our capacity, which has been trending that way for the past few months. Work orders were all about the same from the last few months. Couple of things of interest I really wanted to touch on. We are working out some issues with the new internal phone system with Avaya. They will be here toward the end of the week to hopefully solve all that. We have almost completed, about 99% completed, of our GPS audit of the streetlights. We'll be able to sit down and know exactly what we have in the system, which will be nice. And we have prepared for the Monroe Christmas Parade, which is coming up Thursday. I want to let everybody know that we will be broadcasting that in HD this year. We're going to take over QVC's channel of 105.2. We will announce that at the beginning of the parade with the announcement. People are there, and David will have that on the screen. That is an existing channel, so nobody has to scan their TV. We're taking QVC off the air for most of the day. But we will have it on (inaudible). On SD, too. We have been working with the girls' corps to play some music for them right there in front of the courthouse, so they can perform right there for us, for the cameras. And we hope that all goes off without a hitch. Doesn't look like we're having any rain, so everything should be fine. And I'll take any questions you have.
How's the TV station's coming?
It's slow. We're having trouble upgrading our apexes, which are the device that actually encodes the... And I know it's a little complicated, but it's the device that actually encodes your the channel or the box to see. David is going to stay late Thursday night after the parade. The engineer that's helping with that is actually in Colorado, so it'll actually help that he'll be in the office while they can work on that together. But it's slow. It's just a problem. We're having some issues.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance. Renee is not here tonight, so if you have any questions on any specifics, Matthew can try to answer.
Mayor, if you just, if we look at the report here, just, everything seems to be trending as... And she hasn't here all the utility calls and whatnot. If you look at the financial status report that we give every month, we should be around 83%, and we're hovering right around there. So, we did have the business or the insurance premium tax come in, which bumped revenue up a little bit, so... Any general questions? I'll try to answer for finance department.
Okay. Thank you. Fire Department?
Thank you, Mayor. We had no structural fires for the city during the month of October. Three car fires to report. EMS calls were the lowest so far of the year, 88 calls. 137 calls during the month of October. Applied mutual aid to Walton County four times in October, and we received aid from them seven times. Public relations events, we had 17 events. Pride report that for the year of 2013, we've touched base with over 2,800 residents in Walton County providing fire safety education, and probably another million plus through Trinity Broadcasting for the prevention month of October, where we had one of our Training hours of 544 hours. We had a successful controlled burn of the old structure behind Taylor's wrecker service. No problems there. Everything went very well. A lot of good training involved in that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Police Department?
Thank you, Mayor. Calls for service, we had 1,661 calls to the police department. We had a total of 320 cases, court cases that month. 299 training hours. Had 41 Part 1 crimes and 155 Part 2 crimes. And a total of adult arrests were 115. Juvenile arrests we had were 12. And our community service trash pickup was 580 pounds. And we participated in 15 (inaudible). Community events that month.
Where do y'all pick up trash?
You familiar with Tracy Jackson? He takes out the runarounds in the mornings all along the streets within the city.
I'd ask the chief to send them down there in the area where I live.
We can do that.
But when?
You want them there in the morning?
I'd like to see them down there sometime.
Okay. I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Solid waste?
I'll speak for Danny in his absence tonight. I think the report has been consistent with previous months, and without going line by line, I'll attempt to answer any questions for Danny.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Moving to streets and transportation.
Just highlighting a few areas. We've rented out a community building eight times in the month of October. I know as the holiday season continues, that number should go up for the month of November and December. Our vehicle equipment shop, we are currently doing a lot of our winter maintenance, getting stuff ready for the colder temperatures. Our grounds crew continues to go around collecting litter, almost a ton throughout the city, and doing some grounds and landscaping stuff when weather (inaudible). Street division is, we did a couple of road repairs, couple of utility cuts, and we're continuing to work to come in compliance with our state and federal regulations at the airport. Our sign and markings division is continuing to update our regulatory signs throughout the city. I've mentioned in previous meetings, our stop signs are complete throughout the city, but we are now working on speed limit signs, chevrons through the city. And we're, once we do that, we'll have a good stronghold and be well ahead of the game as far as what's mandated through federal and state regulations with that. My building maintenance division continues to work off of various work orders throughout the city. Other than that, we are in the middle of our leaf season. My truck's been out on the street for two and a half weeks now, and we're almost through one route. I think today, we're about halfway through with the first (inaudible). Time through on Thursday's route, so we still haven't completed a week, and the truck's been out for two and a half weeks. So that's a lot of leaves out right now. But we are on top of that and doing as fast as that truck will go. I'll be glad to entertain any questions for streets and transportation.
Thank you very much. Water, sewer, and gas.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as water treatment (inaudible). Those, the usage is about the same. We did have increase in our work orders and our service calls due to the cooler weather. Start seeing this every year. Performed 16-meter change outs, repaired two water main breaks, and had 64 water leaks. Those are service leaks. We answered 26 after-hour emergency calls, and we added five new water customers on You notice that number's down some. That's due to a flow meter had lightning come in on it, so we had some days it didn't read, so our numbers are off a little bit. 10 work orders issued, responded to three service calls, and answered five after-hour emergency calls. We've continued to work on the 2011 CDPG project. They've removed another superintendent, and so we have a new one again. But things are, things seem to be going pretty good. So hopefully, we'll wrap that thing up in sometime in January. On the natural gas side, total 11,885 MCFs of gas, 21 work orders issued. We also had a comprehensive inspection from the Public Service Commission. Natural gas system, everything went there, good there, no fines. Had some warning on some corrosion issues that there's going to be some meetings in This gas section and Public Service Commission to discuss some, there's some issues with the way the rule reads. So some stuff we've got to work through there. And we continue our repair process on our system leaks. And at the training facility, we held four classes, 21 attended. We had one class held in trialing with nine attending. And we sent the three guys to Tennessee for their ITS training, and we attended the (inaudible). UCC Fall Conference. Any questions? I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you.
That ends our committee report. We'll move into committee information, starting with finance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one item on the agenda this evening. It's the disposal purchase of two field service trucks with utilities, and Mr. Middlebrook is going to handle that.
Yes. Renee's asking me to bring these two tonight. There's several quotes there, estimates from Hardy, Ford, Maxi Price, Loganville Ford, and Akins Ford. The two trucks she's asking to replace, there's pictures right behind the little spreadsheet to give you an idea of what the trucks look like. One of them's 205,000 miles, the other one's 144,933 miles. The low bid on the truck was 2014 (inaudible). Ford F-150 from Hardy Fleet Group at $16,759 apiece. I don't know anything else to tell you about hers.
Sounds like a really good price to me.
Lately, we actually got some, I was kind of surprised at some of the prices we saw on hers and ones I've got later. Saw some really good prices.
Very much needed. I don't know if Jeremiah can speak to the maintenance of the current trucks that we're asking to replace. I mean, these are the meter reading trucks. Mileage obviously is high, but these trucks are in the road on a daily basis, driving numerous amounts of miles, so...
Those two trucks are constantly in for some type of repair or maintenance, more so than the other two newer models for the meter trucks.
But Rodney, with the (inaudible). Meter change outs, and how's that going to affect? That will cut down on some of the mileage, right?
Yes, it should. I mean, because you'll be riding. The unit picks up the readings, so you wouldn't have to... I would think some of them would have to do some re-reads and all, but yeah, it should cut down on some. Which, if you look at the other, I've got, see if she gave me a, on her other trucks. Just giving you an example, the mileage is not really that bad. She's got an 05 that's got 99. She's got three 07s that's running 49, 59, and 70. So they don't put a lot of miles on the trucks anyway. So we're to have the 205 and 144, those, if I'm not mistaken, I think those trucks were handed down from one of our crews. I think that's why the mileage is high.
I think the king cab was.
I think the king cab came from the wastewater place.
Here, none of the motions from the committee.
Make the motion that we purchase two meter reading vehicles from the Hardy Fleet Group, lowest bid, $16,759.
Motion second?
It's got to be in committee.
Finance.
Motion second. All in favor? I oppose. We recommend that full council. That's all we have this evening.
Okay. Moving. Airport have anything?
We don't have any.
Okay. Public Works?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items. The first one is discussion approval of the 2014 law service bid. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. We had August, no, it's November, the 18th, we had a bid opening. We sent out a RFP several weeks prior to that for the contract that would... Take care of all our lawn maintenance areas throughout the city. And we had eight bids turned in for that, with the low bid being turned in by North Georgia Landscaping and Construction Group at $33.70 a month for a total of $40,440 for the year. That's actually around $1,200 cheaper than what we currently paying out now to the same company. So I thought that was a positive result. I'm very confident, and I feel good (inaudible) about this company continuing to do the work, so I'm seeking approval of the North Georgia Landscaping and Construction Group on bidding one in this contract.
And you're happy with their current?
I'm very happy.
One question that was answered in the mail here is on the individual location. There's such a wide variance.
I asked that at the bid opening and couldn't get a reasonable answer from the ones that were there. It's just what they think they can do each location for, and one thinks they can do
Is there any more discussion? What they're being, now we will entertain a motion.
I believe that we contract North Georgia Landscaping and Construction for the lawn maintenance contract for this year, for the new year.
If the motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
With none opposes, we will recommend this approval to the (inaudible). Council at our next meeting. We have another item, Mayor. It is discussion approval, the purchase of a hydrocedar. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you. This hydrocedar, we have had in our fleet on a rental program for the past 12 months. And if you're not familiar with a hydrocedar, anytime we build a shoulder or do any kind of backfill work around our new sidewalk areas, or anything that deals with having to establish a grass system, this machine is what we use to do it. It sprays out, but it looks green, which it is green for a little while or so. It sprays out, but it looks green, which it is green for a little while or so. It mixes water, seed, fertilizer, and a mulch to quickly establish a root system. And we're looking at, well, I'm requesting to purchase this using Sploes funds at a total amount of $12,130 and eighths. If we continue to rent, it wouldn't make a lot of financial sense to pay what we're paying for it throughout. So I think now is a good time to go ahead and purchase it and and continue to use it throughout the city. It's not only used in our department, anybody that needs to use it, you know, can and will use it.
Jeremiah, are you mostly using it with the sidewalks right now?
That's been the primary source right now.
How long is, I mean, this sidewalk plan that you're currently working on is something that we're going to be working on for years to come?
It'll be the last piece through.
And what do we pay to rent?
$1,500 a month.
And how long we been renting it?
It's been on rental since December of '12.
Is there much maintenance?
No, ma'am.
Required on it?
Just as long as we make sure it's clean, after we put it up, it's very little maintenance.
According to my calculation, we've already paid $18,000.
That wasn't the price if we'd have bought it brand new, it would have been about 20?
25, almost 20.
So there's a balance of 12, whatever the 12 1/3 left on it. Rent it for 10 months, we're asking where you're coming out backwards. That's when we're saying.
Basically, they're giving us credit for what we rent, paid rent for, with the interest.
Right.
Sounds like a good deal to me.
But as far as, it'd be used on more than just sidewalk projects, I mean, road projects that we come out and see.
Yeah, any right of way project.
We've also got a hydro seed to dam at the reservoir. And before he started renting this one, we went out for bids and tried to find some people to do it, and it's over $30,000 just for to have the dam hydro seeded. So that's something, purchase this is something we can do on our own.
That's a requirement from the state?
Yeah, that's a requirement from the state. It would allow us to do that.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
It's been motioned second, all in favor? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Utilities?
Thank you, Mayor. And then I do review the purchase of two service trucks. Mr. Middlebrook?
Thank you, Mr. Little. I've got two service body trucks. One's in water, one's in gas. Pictures are following the spreadsheet again. They're both 2002 models. One's got 220,000 miles, other's got 169,000 miles. These trucks were purchased in 2001, and at that time, we had the O'Conne gas system. So we had a lot of extra mileage from going back and forth there. But at that time, until the city took over in 2006, we never survived, was done by contractors. So these trucks served the purpose that they needed to serve due to the fact, they're 350s, but they have gas motors. And so this kind of mileage on them, starting to have some problems with them. I got one that's having some major computer electrical issues. And Jeremiah's got the other one now that's in the shop. I think it's been there a week or two. I think it's mainly suspension type stuff, but pulling the equipment that we pull, because since 2006, we've started doing a lot of these jobs ourselves. We don't bring the contractors in. So over those, that period of years, we've started buying this new equipment to allow us to do the work. But we're trying to pull them with trucks that's really not suitable to pull this type of equipment with. So what I'm asking to do is to replace these two trucks. One would go to water, and water, there was actually three 2002s bought originally. One of them's already been replaced. It was replaced about four years ago. And it was replaced with a 350 with a diesel. So we would replace these two the same way. So water would be, water would have two trucks within a five-year period, and they would be finished. They, all theirs would be, we replaced And then the gas would get their first one. And they'll have one more that's in the budget next year. Then there's also one in the budget next year for the sewer department. What I'd like to do is take these two trucks, see if Jeremiah can take the two and make me one to give to the sewer crew. They wouldn't use it to pull the equipment, but they would use it to haul all the smaller equipment that they use or tools. They currently, when they go on a job site to do a job, they're riding three different pickups, because they've got standard, it's a standard pickup trucks. It's just a single cab, short bed, long bed trucks. So in order to get all the tools and all the equipment out there and the guys, it's three trucks, two to three trucks. So what we would do is take this truck, rehab it, try to make one, and give it to the sewer department, which I could do away with one of the new ones next year at that point. I wouldn't have to buy two next year. I could just give them this one. And we'll see how many years we could get out of it. But basically what would happen is I'd take these two, make one, give it to the sewer guys, and I would surplus two of the regular pickup trucks that they have. They, those two trucks currently have well over 200,000. I think one of them's pushing 300,000 miles. So surplus, end up surplusing three trucks, basically.
These aren't just your standard pickup. I mean, when you say tool body?
Right. If you look at the picture, you Yeah, it's These trucks are loaded not only with the tools, but also meters, meter box s, meter fittings, you know, it's got everything that they would need when they pull up on a job.
And you feel diesel's important, please?
I think Jeremiah could probably speak more to diesel versus gas than I can, but
No doubt for that. You go get better fuel efficiency as well as power when you need pulling this equipment around.
And the low, go back to the, the low bid come in from Hardy Fleet Group at 37,879.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
With all the caveats Mr. Middlebrook gave, he has to go save his money next year. Combining some of these, I'll make a motion that we'll submit to the council for approval of these two
Two from Hardy at 37,879.
Have a motion, Mr. Reddick, is there a second?
Second.
This motion's second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? We will recommend that to council.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Public Safety?
Thank you, Mayor. We've got one item on the agenda tonight. Mr. Armstrong, you can back it up and discuss it.
Actually, uh I'll take that one, Mr. Richardson. Come time, I don't know if y'all got, you saw the pictures in the email that Keith sent out of our fire truck being built? And so it's coming along really nice. Well, it's, now it's time to equip it, and to be able to do that, we'd like to get it, go ahead and purchase this equipment, and when it goes to Alabama for the final assembly, we can mount the stuff on there at that time, which is just standard procedures in building fire trucks, as I understand. So Keith has attached a memo of the total cost of the equipment, as well as a list of the equipment that's needed. And it's itemized out. These are the lowest bids, so every piece of equipment was bid out. So you see a list of the lowest bids there. And we're still coming in $13,000 less than what we had budgeted for the fire truck and the equipment and the Sploes. So what you're getting is a fully equipped, new fire pumper, new off the assembly line for $13,000, $13,500 less than what we had budgeted. So just need your approval to purchase the equipment, Sploes funds, so we can move forward.
Any discussion? No discussion, can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Bring it to council next week. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bring it to council next week.
Okay.
That's all.
DDA?
Mr. Cross?
We have a visitor number talked to one of our business owners at the antique markets that are right in Long County, Mass, and they've said it's the best number they've ever had. And there's a new business opening right next, right now, the last open space there, another antique market. And what she commented is that we're really becoming an antique destination. A lot of cars, a lot of customers from out of state and out of county. And that's during the weekend and on the weekends. So we're looking into partnering with the Long County Chamber and the Development Authority of how do we really capitalize on this as a destination for Monroe. And a lot of things that we've already been working towards with downtown, to make it more of a destination, rather than just a day visit, but how do you stay for longer? And that would go well with our events, and moving forward, just trying to get some more lodging options and just more ways for people to enjoy Monroe for longer than the day or the weekend. So we're still working on that. The clean, the window clean, so they can advertise downtown, open spaces downtown. They'll be ready tomorrow. We'll pick it up, and we're going to have those up by the parade on Thursday for all that crowd coming to town. Fox Five News is coming out tomorrow morning to do a story on the Christmas parade in Monroe, in Monroe, Maine. And I hope you guys got to see Fox Five also featured in Monroe last week. They did a Small Business Saturday as a contrasting story to Big Shoping on Black Friday of how do you support the small businesses. It was really nicely done. Really excited that they came out and did that. It was just a good opportunity that we were able to jump in on it, so. I hear that Channel 11 is also coming out Thursday. So we'll see. I'm really excited for what Utilities is putting together to broadcast our parade well, and hopefully be able to get a lot of traction and promotion out of it and use it to generate more interest for downtown and Monroe as a whole for commercial development. Be happy to answer any questions, if you might have, like DDA or events we have.
All right. Got all DDA?
Yes.
Okay, items of discussion coming up for next week is 2014 Budget All Funds.
Yes, Mayor, that'd be just the resolution to pass the budget for 2014, and it is available for public review. So they just need to come to City Hall and request a copy if they'd like to review the budget.
Okay. And we'll have two appointments for the Downtown Development Authority, and we'll adopt the 2014 council meeting schedule. We have one item requiring action tonight is a public hearing with a plat approval, 620 Yunisia Drive. Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just basically a formality reflecting the anticipatory clause in the leasehold agreement with Yunisia. I'm, well, with Hitachi on Yunisia Drive, where they're giving the property back through the subdivision of property to the county, the county's going to lease it to them. It's just a matter of record keeping to get it signed off on so that they can record it with the county and make that arrangement come to fruition. It's basically taken 14, almost 15 acres off of that tract, would normally be handled as a minor subdivision, except for the size of the tract, and that's why we've brought it before to council tonight for your approval and to get it signed off on.
Do you want to have any questions, or Patrick? Okay, now we'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Adcock?
Second.
Second by Mr. Little. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And with no other business, we need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Richardson?
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll run down there right quick. All right, bro.